Yeah, he was right. He had nothing left to do. Yeah.
People suffer.
Yeah, okay. All right.
But now I got a, I got an email from the district.
She's up there, so.
People who are sharing all of them.
Thank you, Mark.
Give me a healthy snack on the way home, Sam.
Technology challenged over there.
I got that email.
If Sam could just figure out how to.
If you get some lessons from Joe over there, you'll be upset on how you.
He making loan you his op.
Standing their long lives. Sure about that.
Oh, okay.
Wow. I'll get this one to the beginning. Good day for you.
Are we just waiting on Sam is why we're up here right now?
No more. There we go. Gotta be up.
Councilman Shine, you got me worried.
Huh?
You got me worried.
How's that?
I'm agreeing with you and never trust me. Send the teacher now.
Oh, wait a minute. That don't say. Don't say that in front of jail now. You know.
Eat, eat, eat that before you leave today morning.
Yeah, yeah. Dale, you see that?
Can I get somebody else to take the first bite?
You be, you be kind. And Dale, you remember, you called me and told me, make sure you don't leave the mail. I swear he got a couple of, he said, that's all right, make sure you don't leave the mail. You see that, Dale? Dale, you gonna get me in a jam. All right. I'd like to call the city council work session to order for July 21st. Uh, I almost said 3 o'clock, but you know how it is when you, uh, when you have some folks.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today to represent our citizens. Thank you for our city, for our country, for our world and things going on in it. Pray that we'll make good decisions today that will, uh, guide our city the right direction. Appreciate this bit of cooler weather we've had here in the middle of summer, although we know what's ahead of us. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, if you join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please?
Here.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Present.
Senator Jenkins.
Present.
Okay, uh, tomorrow at this particular juncture, I'll ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes of the administrative conference on Monday, May, on Monday, July 7th, 2014, and city council meeting Tuesday, July 8th, 2014. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we in your hands now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. As usual, we want to welcome all of those who are here watching us today, uh, in person, as well as those who are watching and following by U-Screen. Uh, also want to, uh, to take a quick moment, uh, to, uh, extend the expression of congratulations to Shreveport's own Jay Williamson, uh, who I understand, uh, did get a chance to see it, uh, because I was in tra, uh, was traveling over the weekend, but understand he did an outstanding performance on BET Sunday's Best, and I believe has made it, uh, to the top 10, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, yet another Shreve Porter doing some wonderful things and, uh, uh, obviously, uh, had a smile come over my face, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, when I saw that, uh, finally, The Wall Street Journal, I guess, acknowledged what some of us already knew, uh, and that is, uh, Shreveport's considered the third happiest city in the country. So, uh, I know I'm certainly the happiest mayor, uh, around, so, uh, and I just hooked up my, my microphone, B, so you can make sure you hear me and catch me. Uh, I hope it didn't shock myself. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, council members, we turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, uh. Awards and recognition of distinguished guests by city council members. Any city council member? Have anybody like to recognize at this point? Mr. Mayor, uh, communications of the mayor's relative to city business, uh, did you take care of that in the first?
That, that was in composite the first, Mr. Shine.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Farnell? And, and, uh.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shine.
Anybody have any concerns for Ms. Farnell?
Well, um, Mr. Nathaniel Francis, uh, from Norton Street in, in District 8 district, uh, he has an issue that he, he fill out a card.
I was gonna link him up, Rose, so, 'cause I think she can clarify for him.
So she's here.
Mm-hmm. And then see whether or not he needs to do anything differently.
Right.
First, he needs some information from.
Oh, okay, so it's not necessary that he come?
Not yet. We wanna see if they can.
All right. On Garden, on Portland Street. Don't exactly have the address, but it's in the 1300 block, the alley. They've called several times, and they say they've been calling for years about the alley on Portland Street, the 1300 block. That's not you?
It's Mr., uh, Mr. Harris. I'm gonna write it down for.
Write it down for me?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
It needs cutting bad, and they said they've been reporting this for years now, and so if we could just take a look at it and see.
Portland. Okay. I also want you to be aware that we have a arraignment for the case that we have been looking at.
On the near street?
Uh, yes, ma'am, for tomorrow at 9 o'clock.
Okay. Um, and one more thing, uh, Garden, Norton Street, you know, the other day I talked to you, I was just pulling up in, in one of my constituents' yard regarding whether or not the identification of that property is owned by the Paris City or a property owner. I spoke with Dale about it. Uh, Stan agreed to come out with me on Wednesday to kinda look at it and then get back with you.
Okay.
For further discussion, because you and I discussed, you know, abate, the possibility of abatement once the, once the actual owner is, is identified.
Right.
Mr. Harris and I will be addressing that with you later on.
Okay.
And the trees on Norton Street, I did have an opportunity, uh, upon that visit to actually notice that trees are really hanging out in the streets, so I don't know how we would go about getting those trees on Norton Street. That's Mr., that's you too, Stan, so when you meet me over there Wednesday, we'll get a chance to look at the trees as well. Okay. Well, that's it. Thanks for all that you do, Miss.
Just before, just before you close up, uh, I've got a lot for you.
Not too much that I haven't already sent you, but I would appreciate if y'all could get me an update on Pinehurst. There was a house that I sent on Pinehurst.
Mm-hmm.
Tell me where that is.
Mike was not here last time, so he wanna bring in what he forgot last time, but this time, that's 15 minutes.
I, I can just say thanks for following up on what you followed up with.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was quick. Uh, Jenkins?
I'm too embarrassed to add any more to her plate. I call it just about every day. Just about every day.
I bet you I'm gonna be embarrassed.
Oh, I, we exchange emails fairly frequently, daily, pretty much as well.
Okay. Uh, would you have one of your, uh, inspectors to look? I think it's the 4800 block of Methune Street. Seem like they have, uh, remodeling that house, and you can take them a message from the CEO and, 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 and let your, uh, officer find out who's doing the work and make sure they pick it up. And, uh, if not, uh, Dale, I'll swear out of, uh, complaint for his arrest. And see what we get that up. And now, before you go to your seat, would you get with Mr. Francis right quick to see if he needs to come before the council or whether you can handle that for him?
Yes, sir, I will.
If you can't handle that for him, I'll bring him up early, 'cause I know he wants to get back to work. And, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Francis was one of my students years ago. Years ago.
Councilman Shine?
Yes.
For the record, um, I did initiate a meeting with Attorney Scott, as well as myself and Mr. Francis, uh, a few months ago regarding the same issue. So I don't think we discussed it with you at all, Ms. Farnell.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sibley, I'm gonna follow your directions now. What do you, what, what, what do you?
I'm gonna link him up so he can address his initiation in terms of the notice and the 10 days to be sure that everything's appropriate there.
Right.
And then, uh, I think indicate he wants to maybe come back at the next council member to address the old issue.
That's fine. Nathaniel, come up right now. We'll take care of you right now. And, uh, about the, what is it, extending 10 days?
I hadn't received a, I suppose I received a, a letter and then got with the council, and I hadn't received a letter.
Name and address, Nathaniel.
Big one?
Gotta give you name and address.
Uh, my name is Reverend Nathaniel Francis Jr., 2975 Willimane Street, 34 Louisiana.
Okay.
Okay. And kinda talk with Mr., Mr., uh.
I haven't received, I, it came today. I haven't received.
Okay, just entering it to the record.
Mr. Francis was given a notice. He, he appeared at the property standards board, and an order was issued. He has 10 days from receipt of the notice. He hasn't received the notice yet. So the time starts, the 10 days ti, 10 days start upon his receipt of it.
So now, uh, he will make contact with your office when he receives the notice?
If he wished to appeal the property standards notice, he has 10 days from rec, when he receives it, to appeal it to city council.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you know, to send you appeal to, uh, Mr. Arthur Thompson?
Arthur Thompson?
His, his letter that he will receive identifies name, address, phone number. All of the information is in that letter on what he needs to do.
Wonderful.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that fine, Reverend?
I believe that's what he needs.
Is there any way you can see, see me a copy of that letter? I mean, you know, so because I've been communicating with him too, and a lot of times when he's talking to me, if I can see what we're referencing.
Okay. The letter has already been sent out. I can get you a copy of it, though. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That'd be great. All right.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I think to clarify, Mr. Reverend Francis's issue was whether or not that 10-day clock had started, so we wanted to clarify that for you.
So it has not started. It'll start when the letter reaches your house.
Yes, sir.
Uh, reaches your, where, house or hands, whatever. We're gonna say the house is your hands. So when, when you get it, that's when the clock will start ticking. Reverend, thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
Uh, and, and, and Dale, let me say this. He was a very good student in, uh, in school. I just wished I had a lot more of him like him.
Thank you, Ms. Farnell.
And I, and you see, he turned out to be a preacher, 'cause I tell, uh, the mayor's friend, Archie Hall, that if I had taught him, he would've turned out to be a preacher.
Okay.
Where's Willie? Willie back there? The chief back there? I was just, you, look, I was just telling the mayor about your good friend, Archie Hall, that if I'd had a chance to teach him, he would not have been a basketball player, he would've been a preacher. 'Cause now, you say, you say that you used to dunk on him.
Oh, God. He was a good, he was a good athlete, and I'm not gonna talk bad about my good friend. He was a good athlete, but he did take severe beatings from Woodland High.
You all heard that, didn't you? You all heard that?
It wasn't even close.
Now, you know I'm gonna deliver that, don't you?
You know.
All right. I'm gonna deliver that to him.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna tell him the mayor was laughing at him.
I laughed at him when he got dunked on.
Well, I'm telling you. Dale, you see that, huh? I see it. Okay, so they can't deny that they did say it.
Councilman Shine, I got a question.
Okay.
Um, really for Dale, we got something from the finance department, and Charles, if he's in here, may be able to answer this. When we got our last sales tax update, I remember thinking that June we were 0.5% somewhat above projections, right?
0.5 over last year's same.
Last year's, right? Isn't that correct?
0.5.
Now, interestingly, in the finance department's deal, it shows us a negative 0.6. Is that 'cause we're using updated? Is he using more updated numbers, or am I looking at the wrong month? Or tell me what we got here.
They use, what you're looking at, I think, is what is compared to what they expected to receive.
Budget.
This year. In words, they take the, yeah, they take the budget and divide it by 12, and they expect to receive that each month. So in a given month, it may not correspond to what we actually receive.
So they're dividing it up equally over the 12 months?
Right.
And comparing it to that as opposed to?
What actually comes in.
The yearly patterns of when it comes in.
So I got you. You're saying the variance, though the columns are the same, the variance is not same?
Right. The number you're comparing to may not necessarily be the same.
Variance, they're not comparing the same variances.
Correct.
And you're right, it doesn't say it's what variance we're referring to. Okay. So I just wanted to ask if there's like an updated portion of sales and use, like, you know, mid-month or something like that? Okay.
The one that we sent, that Dale, Dale sends you comes from sales news, and that compares their numbers from year to year.
Right. But this percent variance may be budgeted.
Correct.
As a function of annualized revenue divided by 12, and so we could be, just got answers to my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Dale, was that your report or?
Uh, we will have it at the, uh, first August meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh.
And same with the surety bond.
Right, Ms. Scott, we'll get you next meeting.
Just clearing.
Okay, um. Ms. Sanders, we'll get you tomorrow. Uh, did you have something you wanted to say today?
Tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, I don't believe we, Dale, I don't believe we have a public hearing, do we?
We have no public hearing, Mr. Shine.
Thank you very much. Adding legislation to the agenda, do we have some?
Mr. Shine, there are three items, two of which are on the E-agenda. Um, resolution, what will be resolution 127 and 128, if they are added, uh, come from the city attorney. One concerns Amtrak Rail Service is just endorsing, uh, Amtrak Rail Service, and the other is a resolution authorizing, uh, NLCOG to incorporate as a nonprofit corporation. Uh, the third, I believe, is for Mr. Jeff Everson, and it's a resolution suspending certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to the sale of alcohol at, and dispensing of alcohol at 1401 Fairfield Avenue for a customer appreciation event.
Uh, let's add that tomorrow, all, all of those. Is all right with the clerk? Uh, Mr. Sibley, uh, confirmations? We have none?
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sibley, we're back with you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Under Section 8, consent agenda legislation, there are no items. Section 9, regular agenda legislation, sub-A, resolutions on second reading and final passage or which will require only one reading. Number 115 authorizes the acceptance of a donation from Wells Fargo Premier Asset Services and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Any questions? If not, proceed.
Number 116 authorizes the execution of a cer, certification agreement with the State of Louisiana Department of Cultural Recreation and Tourism.
Any questions? If not, proceed.
Number 118 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus.
Ms. McCullough?
I'm, I'm looking, there's only one piece in District A, so I mean, I'm fine with it.
Okay, uh, proceed.
Number 119 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus. This is regarding districts A, B, C, F, and G.
Jeff?
I had a chance to take a look at both. Thank you.
Okay, proceed.
Number 120 accepts dedication for Cross Ridge Court in Splanae Unit 6, Lake District, and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
Mike?
No comments at this time, Mr. Shine.
Okay, uh, proceed.
Number 121 authorizes the settlement of all claims against the city of Shreveport and its employee Jonathan Eichner in the matter entitled Steve Hendricks versus Jonathan Eichner and the city of Shreveport, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I know this is gonna, gonna be reviewed, uh, in a closed session, but it was reviewed by the risk committee. I think it gonna get a nod of approval from the risk committee.
All right. Proceed.
Number 122 proclaims August 7th as Purple Heart Recognition Day in Shreveport.
Uh, Sam?
Uh, we certainly like to have your support on that. I think it's a very, uh, meaningful resolution that recognizes people who, uh, gave an extra measure, uh, while they served in our military service. So, so I would like you to, uh, take a look at it, but it makes the agenda on tomorrow.
Did you, uh, include, uh, illustrious clerk? Uh, Mr., uh, should I say, uh, Oliver, is that Captain Arthur Thompson?
Unless he hurt his back carrying those lobbles.
Wait.
That much of a risk.
It was a shoulder compliment.
Okay. Sorry. Now, B down there on the end, that could be a different story, but, aren't they?
Uh, you see, Oliver and the mayor, now here I am calling you the illustrious, and they would've said, the only way you got hurt was carrying something? Man, you don't think that was a little awful?
Well, I'm sure he, he would be a recipient of the golden heart, but this is gonna be the purple heart.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. I'd've tried to work in there. Okay, okay, Dale.
Number 123 declares the intention of the city of Shreveport to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed $75 million water and sewer bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition and construction of improvements, extensions, and replacements to the water and sewer utility system of the city, make an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of such bonds, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Dale, I would not pass up, uh, our illustrious if I knew that would again. Seems like I'm just, uh, all the illustrious attorneys. Uh, we'd like to have them to come up with nothing but a wave and a smile, but if they have more than that, we would accept that.
Fortunately, in this case, Mr. Shine, council members, they don't work by the hour, so, uh, there's no motivation for them to stay here through the balance of the meeting.
Well, we might, we, we might keep them a little while. We can get some free, 'cause you know, usually, you can't get nothing free from attorneys. Yeah. I learned that from Dale a long time ago. I mean, you just open the door and walk in, they wanna charge you. So, uh, if we can get something free, uh, be great. Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon. Um, this is a utility bond issue. Um, the administration requested that we move forward with this item. This is only preliminary approval for the city council. It's, uh, not to exceed $75 million. Um, we will come back to the city council for final approval. This is only to get the process started. We obviously have to go before the state bond commission. We had to come back for a second reading on this resolution, and also an ordinance for you all to approve. Um, and the reasoning to moving forward is because of the consent decree that everybody is aware of and EPA requirements. Uh, we have to advertise at least four consecutive weeks. Um, so, to make a long story short, we have a lot of time to get final approval for, for the city council, but it has to get the ball rolling. Administration asked us to do it, and, uh, I think this'll get the process going.
Have you had a chance to discuss this with, uh, my cousin over here, uh, Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Uh, we, we haven't had that meeting yet. We know that. Certainly on those proceeds, I'm sure they'd love to take me to lunch, so we have that discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could we be sure to get all the names for the, for the record?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I believe even though this is on the agenda as a one-reader, I believe that it, uh, needs to lay over until the next meeting before it can be adopted.
Well, uh, we'll, we'll do that. We'll get a motion from the vice chairman here, too. I won't get to that, uh, tomorrow.
And, and even though it's a resolution, it requires two, again?
That's, that's the note that I have from Terry, and also the fact sheet says that, please.
I think it's, on your fact sheet should say August 12th for the.
For final passage of the.
Right, for final passage.
Okay. Terry, we'll make sure we take care of that tomorrow.
Let's, let's get your names, just for the record.
Anybody?
Okay.
If, if some more questions in just a minute?
No, they just want their names on the record.
Alex Washington.
Yeah, okay, right. B, you got it?
Neil Bowes.
Uh-huh. Well, you know them, huh, B?
Sir.
Okay, any more questions for the attorneys? Especially since they're not being paid by the hour, and they use them when they're being paid by the hour. We try to rush them out of here. Dale, you have any?
Uh, just that we appreciate the good work, as always, from our bond council team.
Mayor, Rose?
I was just looking at Alex. I had an opportunity to meet his son.
Oh, here we go.
And, uh, he's very, he's very short, Councilman Shine, compared to.
She said, "I'm short."
Yeah, he's very short. His son is 6'4".
Calling me short now.
Um.
Well, you know, I, I saw him with that guy, but I didn't know that was his son.
That's a war.
I thought it was a basketball player he was bringing into town.
No, actually, he, he's starting law school this fall.
Yeah.
He's 21.
So Alex is really not that tall, Councilman, that's what I was saying.
I'm tall when he's out of town. I'm tall.
All right.
Soon to be Washington, Wales, and, uh, Wash, uh, uh, Washington, Washington, and Wills.
Three more years.
But you know, I don't know. By that time, one of them might be wearing a black robe. Hmm.
Probably the daddy.
They're all with heel stones.
Thank y'all very much.
All right.
Okay, Dale?
Thank you.
Section B introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to August 12, 2014. Number 124 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the city of Shreveport and Wallace Lake Development LLC for the private water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve St. Andrews subdivision unit number one.
Mike?
Good with it.
Okay.
Number 125 recommends endorsement and adoption of the regional food system master plan prepared by We Grow Together for establishing a healthy regional food system.
Any questions, comments?
Just wondered if the mayor had any input on this particular piece of legislation.
Hey, hey.
There's, there's a lot in there.
Giving my best advice.
All right, I think I see a little J up coming in there.
We did get a chance on the, uh, master plan committee to review this. It's a real positive, uh, piece of legislation. Glad to see it.
Very popular in other states as well.
All right, Dale?
Number 126.
And I think it should be noted that this is derivative of our, as, as mentioned, of the Shreveport-Cattle 23 Master Plan. the Shreveport Cattle 23 Master Plan. Um, and it is all focused towards, uh, Mr. Shine, making us a healthier community.
There you go.
Encouraging us to plant our own gardens, raise our own food.
I got in a, I got in a discussion with my son on Sunday about Louisiana and America being so, so overweight. I tell him, "Mr. Son, that's just, that's just, uh, uh, I look at good living."
How you think we got number three happiest city in the country? We've been eating good.
You got to understand, Louisiana's known for good food. So, you know, that's a, that might be a plus sign. "Oh, Daddy, you know that's not a plus sign." And, uh, you know, he's, he's, he's at the age where he's into that health kiss. I say, "I'm going to just give you a few more years, and you're going to forget about all this. You're going to start eating everything."
But Councilman Shine, this, this, too, is going to be, uh, real good for our families. I mean, because what happens is it educates the, just the children as well as the families on, you know, how to grow their own food, how to be selective about foods that they eat. And, um, they're also encouraged, you know, a lot of us, we have little rose gardens, different types of flower gardens in our front yards. But what I can appreciate about this, it's encouraging families now to actually grow vegetables in your front yard. I'm sure Stephen Jean, uh, he can identify with this a little bit. But, um, yeah, I've even been given some consideration of growing gardens in my front and backyard.
My wife has been doing it, and I don't know what to do with all the tomatoes right now.
Well, I'll take some.
More than we know what to do with.
But it's, it's a very good project, especially for the various communities throughout the districts in the city of Shreveport.
All right, Dale?
Number 126 states the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Shreveport CV Housing LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. This matters not to be adopted prior to August 12, 2014.
Any questions? Uh, not, move on?
Section C is introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to August 12, 2014. Number 73 amends the 2014 capital improvements budget.
Any questions? Yes?
I have one.
Okay.
Now, when you read the fact sheet, not that I'm, not for landscaping I-49, but there's some, and I'm assuming it's just a budgetary in terms of what funds are available now, what those other proj- we're not losing those other projects at the expense of this. I mean, just the way it reads, it's like, "Well, you really going to get rid of water and sewer project?" But I don't think landscaping's important. I assume it's just a monetary.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Dale?
Number 74 is zoning matter C-4414. It amends chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the north side of Piermont Road, 150 feet east of Line Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from B-1 buffer business district to B-2 neighborhood business district. This matter was requested for remand to the MPC.
And my only question on that is, we don't have to wait to, we can do it tomorrow, right? We don't, even though it's on for introduction, you can remand it before you get to vote. Okay.
Okay, Dale?
Number 75 is zoning matter C-4914. It amends chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Knight Street and East Preston Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-A Residence Agricultural District to B-3 Community Business District.
Any questions, Oliver?
No, but I'm very supportive. That's a new YMCA project plan, so that's a great deal.
And it seems like there's going to be a beautiful structure, doesn't it?
There isn't. Certainly, tomorrow I do intend to send out appreciation to BHP for being the lead sponsor of that fantastic project, because it is a significant commitment from there.
Would you like to tell, uh, the group the amount?
I'm going to guess it's close to $10 million, but...
10.7, I believe.
10.7.
I, I was saying that because I think he was one of the ones that might have been holding the check up out there.
I was, Mayor and I were both fighting for that position, but they wouldn't let either one of us get out of there.
We, we would have yielded to Mr. Jenkins. Knowing that he was going to provide the difference between the 10.7 and the actually 11 million that, uh, Councilman Everson just referenced.
Oh, that's it. Sadly, but the one thing, though, that is meaningful, and I'll mention it today, I'll mention it again tomorrow, um, the scope of the project does require more than what's been raised to date. So, they are looking for corporate sponsors to be involved in that project. And, uh, for those that have any interest, um, it's a great opportunity to really make a significant impact on our community. It's very well designed. The scope is very cleared out in how they phased, staged and phased the development of this project. So, for, you know, somebody with an interest in supporting it, there's certainly opportunities going forward.
Dale, that would be a lot of press for you running for office. You know, you had a big sign, saying, "Contribution from Sam Jenkins for $500,000."
I need some money to back up that check.
Mr. Shine, uh, the attorney for the YMCA is called, and even though this cannot be adopted, uh, until after the end of the month, they are asking that, uh, council members would take a close look at this to see if anybody has any objections or questions, because they need to close before the council actually adopts this. And if there are issues, uh, they would not do it. Uh, but if, if nobody sees any issues, then they're going to go on, because they do it, there is, there are some savings, uh, if they do it.
And that's on the land acquisition itself, right?
Do it, well...
Mr. Shine?
Yes?
Uh, can I suggest, Art and Terry, if you guys would give some consideration, is it possible, uh, to do a, a one-reader resolution that could be, uh, rules could be suspended on tomorrow? It could be added, expressing the council's intent, but, uh, would, uh, would not be as binding as this, and it has to hold over for official action, but would represent an expression of the council's and administration's sentiment position?
Would it care?
I, I, I think they would be satisfied just knowing, but if the, if the council would like for us to draft such a resolution, we'd be happy to do it.
I don't think we have any problems with this. Do it, council?
I, I mean, no, I, I'm happy to go either way. If you need to tell, I don't know, if it's Mr. Russo that's doing it, if, you know, if you wanted to just ask him if you prefer that, if that's more definitive to him, great. If not, we'll go with a silent endorsement.
Of course, if that happens and you don't pass it, then...
Right, that's, that's my concern with it. If some facts change, or people, you know, get some other input, then what kind of a position have you put yourself in if you've adopted a resolution, resolution saying you intend to adopt an ordinance at a later point?
Well, but I mean, arguably, it's changed, it's changed whether you're in, I mean, your intent was there, you're not...
I mean, it would all depend on the facts.
We'll, we'll be happy to talk to everybody.
Yeah, we'll let the legal staff and Thompson make the decision. Okay, Dale?
Section D is ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 53 amends the 2014 capital improvements budget. This matter was postponed and was also, there's an amendment.
And I believe we're ready to move forward with this, uh, finally, at long last. We, I think we've, uh, struck a balance here that's ready to roll.
I will second that motion on tomorrow.
Okay, okay, Dale?
Ordinance 67 amends the 2014 general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. This matter was previously postponed, and is regarding the street sweeping program.
We had a nice discussion on that. Sam, you want to come up and, and make a few comments to the, uh, do you?
If you're on the phone.
Yeah, if you're on the phone.
I'll be happy to cover for you.
Okay.
We did just, um, have an infrastructure committee meeting, um, where we discussed this, and the infrastructure committee did vote to move forward, uh, and recommend the council, uh, pass, uh, this ordinance, uh, authorizing, uh, what we've been sort of referring to as a street sweeping program, but it actually incorporates more than that. It's, uh, street sweeping, uh, litter removal, weed control, um, and really, some, uh,
illegal signage?
Illegal signage and enforcement officers for both, uh, solid waste and illegal signage ordinances. So, it's a pretty comprehensive, uh, first step, uh, and what will be a, a couple more steps we'll have to take to fully, uh, see that program come, uh, to light. But, uh, we did recommend to move forward with it.
And Sam, what?
This is for the purchase of the streets.
Yeah.
Right, but I was hoping that we see some numbers on comparing it to contract before we vote on this, because this isn't the program, this is just on the streets.
This is the purchase of the street sweeper, and you were wanting to do that before we see this?
Well, I don't want to agree to buy it if it's cheaper to do it.
Dale, I think you could probably get those numbers together. You're the mayor by, uh, tomorrow, and we can move forward on this, because, Sam, we did agree that we would start in my district first and then go yours.
I thought we were going to do it alphabetically.
Pretty close. I like alphabetically.
I like alphabetically.
All right, Dale?
Yes, sir, we will push as far as we can have those numbers available by tomorrow.
Please proceed.
Number, uh, 70 declares the city's interest in certain vacant lots at surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant lots acquired by Community Development for Phase III of Concordia Place Development to Fuller Center for Housing of Northwest Louisiana. This matter is not to be adopted prior to August 12, 2014.
Okay.
Number 71.
One question or one comment. Hopefully, we can get, are we looking into the title issue in this case ahead of time before we get started?
Sir, as I appreciated, they are not, Bonnie.
Okay.
These titles are clear.
Okay, are these titles clear? I just want to, you know...
Let's make sure.
So important.
I mean, because we, you know, I don't want to spend, I mean, I mean, if it's already been done, a good answer is yes. So, that's, it's not why.
No, there are not any title issues associated with these properties.
So, upon this donation, they have a clean title, and the title's going, who does the title go to initially?
It goes to the Fuller Center.
To the Fuller Center itself?
Yes.
And it's deeded to the Fuller Center?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Dale?
Number 71.
Hold it, okay.
Can we go back to ordinance 75 on introduction? It's the one, uh, I think that's the Y property. Um, it's actually, the MPC voted to rezonate to B-2 with MPC approval of certain components, so that's a mistake, the B-3. Uh, Mr. Jean and I just talked about it. They will prepare a corrected ordinance, and we can introduce it tomorrow. I don't think we have to add it separately to the agenda because it's a lesser included, um, it's, it's lesser than the B-3, but I just wanted to let y'all know that. It's, it's B-2 with MPC approval of the Health Club and certain...
Thank you. All right, Dale?
Ordinance 71 amends ordinance number 150 of 2013, which amended and reenacted section 10, that's 172 of the Code of Ordinances. And I believe this is regarding Sunday alcohol sales?
Any?
It, it's in reference to Sunday alcohol sales in that particular district that we had a sunset provision in there, if I'm not mistaken.
At Marshall Street.
At Marshall Street, and now we're proposing, after the police have surveyed it for whatever four or five months and haven't seen a problem, they're supporting this.
All right, thank you. Let's move on, Dale.
Ordinance 72 declares the city's interest in certain vacant property at surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant property acquired by Community Development via foreclosure to hope for the homeless incorporated. This matter also is not to be adopted prior to April 12, 2014.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, August 12, 2014. And that concludes all the scheduled legislation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation for the council?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Um, for, for discussion purposes, um, just to let Public Safety Committee know, there has been some, um, talk again about potentially, um, picking back up on the discussion of 170 of 2012, which is the bird parking, um...
There has been.
Subject, yes. So, um, recent developments there, um, but wanted to just mention that to you. I'm not taking it off the table yet, but, um, may want to, uh, have some further discussion about that one.
Well, I certainly think that we should bring that back to the Public Safety Committee before we take it off the table, for sure. There was a, that wasn't the easiest deal we did.
It was not, agreed. That's why I mentioned it earlier.
Okay, the chairman of the Public Safety Committee will look into that. I know. Okay, appeals. Uh, we had appeals. Who has, Mr. Farnell?
Malcolm. Thanks.
Doing alcohol first, uh?
Okay.
Appeals.
Our first case that we have is in Councilman, it's 2806 West Maple Street, Councilman Sam Jenkins, 2806 West Maple Street. The honor was here, and, uh, seals has been replaced, but there has not been anything else. He has, um, he's repaired some of the seals since the last time, but that was all. Um, he still has further work to do, and I'm in agreement to give him another 60 days to complete what he needs to be done on the property.
All right, so move for 60 days?
You want to let him sell water, too? You, you want to sell water, too? Okay.
I think from the photographs, it looked like some progress been made.
That's good. I would, I would want him to come down here and then get a chance to talk, because you know how, uh, you know, real maids would say that, you know, the intimidating, and, uh, that's Michael Frey, and I know, but, uh, it has been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins to give him 60 days. Did I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Oliver Jenkins, uh, on the favor vote, yes, opposed is no, uh, with a five, no, seven, six, five vote. Uh, be you ready? Uh, seven, uh, give him 60 days.
Our next case is in Councilwoman McCullough's area, 2420, Jeanne Wayne. The last time that this was up before you all, uh, she was to bring back an engineering report stating about the foundation, clean up all the debris. Since that time, there's been no significant structural changes. Cleanup has not been abated. I'm not sure if she was here.
Ms. Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, she was supposed to get it taken care of. Yeah, so, she's not here.
She's not here, and I'm going to ask that, uh, we can proceed with demolition.
Move to proceed with demolition.
Been moved by, uh, Council McCullough, seconded by Councilman...
I, I, I'll do it, but, you know, in the spirit of cross-district cooperation...
Yeah, I forgot. Oliver, you got, that's, that's a bad habit of yours, always getting into it.
I think we stated clearly what our expectations were.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, it was stated clearly what the expectations were.
Was the motion to proceed with demolition?
Yes, and seconded by, uh, Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Mr. Shine, I need your vote.
You ready? Okay, let's vote. That motion passes with a seminal vote. Okay?
Our next case is in Councilman Efferson's area, Mr. Bobby Moore.
Bobby, come up, Bobby.
There's been no attempt to repair any damage to the home. At this point, there is still significant water infiltration, uh, from the roof. Some canvas has been put down on the roof, but the damage to the roof, it has opened holes in them. The west wall has evidence of rot due to the water infiltration, because the siding has rotted and has fallen off. And he's here.
I'm Zachary Moore. I'm, uh, putting in for my mother. That's Bobby Moore. That's my mother.
Okay.
Our recommendation for this, he has 30 days to repair the roof and front porch area.
That's what I'm in the process of doing now.
All bushes and weeds need to be cut away from the structure.
You want to make comment?
Yeah, um, Zachary Moore.
Okay.
I'm the, um, son of Bobby Moore.
All right.
Right now, I'm in the process of now trying to get some things done to the house. Uh, the roof is damaged pretty bad, like she was saying. Uh, so it's pretty much been like a, um, just getting the money together to, to have the roof repaired. So, I'm in the process of doing that now. I've had some people to come over and, uh, give me an estimate on preparing the roof, and, uh, so we're in the process of trying to put that together now.
Well, let's, let's do this, because, I mean, it does look like there's substantial work to be done here, but, um, but obviously, the house, I would love to see you be able to save it. Um, I'm going to make a motion for a 30-day extension, but when we come back, what I'd like to see is make sure that the, the weeds have been cleared back and see some progress on that roof. Um, so, uh, Dorothy, what was your, am I stating that the same as the recommendation there, or...
Yes, but I'd also ask, um, request that, um, he gets an, a permit. Do not start work on that property, the roof, until you get a permit.
Okay, so we'll do a 30-day extension right now. You'll come back in 30 days, and hopefully we'll have some progress there. Permit's been pulled, and some work's being started.
It's been moved by Councilman Efferson for 30 days. It's been moved by Councilman Efferson for thirty days. Been seconded by Councilwoman McCullough. Let's vote. All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. That's with a seven oh vote for thirty days. Yeah, seven oh vote? Yeah.
Our next case is in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' area, eight thirty-two Drexel Street. The owner is here. And of course, there had been no progress in the house. But I have talked with the owner, and these are the things that I'm asking him to do. He needs to first apply for a permit. He needs to repair the roof. And in ten days, we're asking for him to eliminate the back patio, do the cleanup, cut the grass and the weeds. We're asking for the roof to be done in thirty days.
Okay, I mean.
Sixty days, I'm sorry, sixty.
Okay, and is this Mr. Matthews? No.
No, my name is Leroy Sury.
Wrong actor.
Oh, there we are, new owner, sorry. I was looking at the top of the thing. So, do you think you can get that accomplished in sixty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that a motion from?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
My.
Somebody living in the house.
Oh, it can't be. There's no walls on the back of it.
I was just looking at the open windows and everything. What's he going to do about securing that?
Yes, we have it here for securing. He's going, I'm sorry, that it's going to be secured also within that ten-day period. So, what we're asking for is that the nuisance be abated, that it be properly secured within ten days. If not by the owner, then city forces or private contractor will correct the abatement with such cost being the responsibility of the owner. But then we're giving him sixty days.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor?
Abate everything.
I mean, it's already been moved and seconded. It was moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Then we'll have two seconds by Councilwoman McCullough. All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. Motion passes.
Or it's sixty days?
Sixty days. Motion passes for sixty days.
I mean.
It's on September twenty-second.
What?
Okay, but, Mr. Sury, you understand what she's talking about securing the premise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because there's a whole, you know, wall plus that needs to be secured back there.
Yes, I had came in and did a cleanup and a demo. It wasn't like that when I received the property, when I purchased the property. I came in since then and brought a dumpster and cleaned up around the front of it so it wouldn't look so bad, you know, to the neighbors. And I told her I would secure the place and also demo that patio within the next ten days.
Okay, perfect. And are you the outright owner, or is there another group?
I'm the outright owner.
So, the other three are no longer, okay, perfect.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, seven oh vote? Yeah, seven oh vote. Okay, Dorothy.
Our next case is in your area, Mr. Shine, sixty-one forty-three Wrightway Boulevard. I think the owner is present. Again, this property, he purchased the property. And since he's had it, we had to do a ten-day letter to him. There was a demolition order already on it. He says he's a contractor. As I've told him, I want all of the rotted wood replaced, the seals removed in thirty days. And he is to remove all vegetation within the next two weeks. Our city forces would do it, and we would charge the owner with the abatement of the vegetation and nuisance.
Mr. Nelson, you think you can do it in thirty days, or you?
I, since I bought the property, I went over there, cleaned up, cut the grass. I went and pulled the permit. This is when I found out all this was going on. But this will be the second house I done done. You know, I do them. But I need to leak sixty days. Already got the joists, already got the windows, already got all the material. I just need that permit.
Okay, it's been moved to give him sixty days. Been seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. Any questions and discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed is no.
He has to get the vegetation cleaned in ten days.
All right, lots of luck. Huh?
It's too late for me to go get the permit now.
No, what time is it? No, no, you can go get it.
No, you can't get it until I go around.
Next, Ms. Dorothy.
Yes, sir, the next case is going to be thirty-eight thirty-one Conway Street.
And Mr. Cox is?
Mr. Cox has left because that case has been closed. He didn't move the vehicle.
Okay.
He did what?
He didn't move the vehicle.
Okay, so, so move that this case be closed. Can I get a second? And seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin, can you be? All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. Okay, this motion passes with a seven oh vote.
Ms. Farnell?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you contact Ms. Deborah at nineteen forty-two Maple Street concerning this? There's some raw sewage running from her neighbor's yard to hers. If you get a chance, contact her.
Yeah, that's another one that's just come in that sounds like a pretty big problem.
I believe we're now in the alcoholic beverage ordinance appeals.
Okay. Officer?
Local Collins is here.
Good afternoon, if you got a tab one, little white book for Copecellis. If you'd like to, I'll summarize what's before you at this time, if that's.
Please, please.
Back on March twenty-fourth, we brought Copecellis up for, they had four violations. You voted unanimously to give them six-month probation. And basically, you said if they have any more violations in the six months, that we should bring them back to you for further action. On April fourth, the vice team went in to do an inspection. They found an underage person in there who said in a report she was led in by one of the employees. And turned underage person was cited for being underage in the facility. The employee was cited for allowing that person in. Since then, the girl has pled guilty, underage girl has pled guilty to being in the establishment. And the employee actually got DA probation and paid a court cost. So, that's already been court even before we even got it. So, at this time, it's whatever you feel action is. We just brought it back for you to do whatever you need to.
Quick question. Did she admit that she had wedged her foot in the door? Did she state that her uncle or cousin let her in?
All I can say is I had a report before me, and she stated in the report that her cousin actually let her in the door. That's what was written in the report. I was not there. I'm going on what was written in the report.
One other question. The, according to this, she was paying the two girls working the door forty dollars to get in.
That's, again, that's what stated, the statement that the vice agents took. That's what she told them, and that was reflected in the report.
Are those two girls still working there?
That was at an earlier time.
That was at an earlier time, okay.
And like I said, that was something that was stated in the report. She was not written, or nobody was written on that violation. Supposed violation. The only thing that was written is what was observed at that time.
And the person is, the person that was in question is not employed there.
I believe she has been terminated.
Yeah, she has been out.
Could we get a statement from one of the? Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, we did let the girl, the bartender, go that night when it all happened.
Yes.
Can we get his name?
I'm sorry, your name.
Chad Fungy, Treeport, Louisiana, four hundred Commerce Street, seven eleven oh one. The employee stated that she did not let the girl in. That's what she's telling us, but we did let her go. She was terminated that night. We're going to go ahead and add another six cameras. And that's what we're going to do. We started on it today. And each door, that's an exit door or an entry door, is going to have its own designated camera. The door that was in question, the camera that was observing the area, is kind of in the stairway, so it kind of watches stairway and the door. Well, because of the length of it, it did not record the actual process of the door being opened by her or what the young girl did coming in. On the next camera on the outside, we see the bartender walking out pretty quickly. So, she comes down the stairs. You see this in about, I think, was it ten, fifteen seconds later, maybe less? That process, she was outside going around to the front of the building, back in through the entry's door. So, what we have to do now is obviously add a camera. So, I'm going to add a camera to each door. So, if you walk up, you're seen. If you walk in, you're seen. It's designated on its own recorder with two terabytes. And we're going to do that. Exit doors on the Commerce Street side. We're going to do the one that's in the back alley by the kitchen. We're going to do the one that's on Travis Street. And we're going to do one that is by the back glass, where the kitchen is served, where they have the eye fry. We're going to do one by the ID checkpoint, where the people check IDs. Right now, we have thirty-two cameras. That covers pretty much the basis of the building, but is always gaps. So, what I decided I feel that would be worth it was to put these certain cameras on certain points. So, if you check an ID, so-called the question of the forty-dollar deal and all that kind of stuff, if they come up, they're going to be under ID at all times. I mean, under camera. Not a camera kind of doing a wide watch on a wide area. This is going to be designated for that particular spot, that particular location. Same way as the door. So, if you walk in that door right there, you will be seen. You will be noticed. You will know who did it and who did what, either by the patron or by the employee. And that's, you know, all I can, thing that I can do, except I can't be everywhere every point. So, I'm doing what I can, I thought was right, and I'm thinking it's right. And we're going to just keep trying to prove, excuse me, improve more things to make it what makes y'all happy and what makes everybody happy. I'm not trying to do this, not, you know.
Was the employee a good employee?
I hate to say it, really, I was very shocked because she was, she was actually doing checking IDs prior to that point on part-time when we needed somebody to check IDs. And I was bragging how good she was. So, this situation, I'm not sure how to really explain this one, how to take this one. But I thought she was doing well.
I hate to see you let her go if she was a good employee.
Well.
Officer, is it any way he could put on probation?
What was the question again?
If she was a good employee, and I'd hate to see him lose a good employee because good employees make you business. If that would be a possibility, maybe putting her on probation, changing her to another position and then eventually bringing her back if she was a good employee.
Basically, it's up to the employer.
This is for the permit. This has nothing to do with the employee.
Yeah.
For consideration of the permit.
Is this for the permit for the entire?
I'll tell you, Councilman Efferson, I'd like to see some additional probationary time put in here.
That's what I was thinking is.
Last time it had something to do with minors.
Actually, that's what I was thinking is that, you know, when this, this event happened so recently after the last time they were here, I mean, it was almost like they didn't have time to make many changes before this happened. So, I'd like to tack on a little bit of time because since then, they have had an incident. And I do believe that they have made improvements in the way that they're managing it. But I think it would be appropriate to add maybe, you know, maybe a month to the probation period on the weekend. As a, as a way to, you know, sort of, so sort of this event happened within the first week after that probation started. But like I say, I think it took a little time for management changes to set in and take place. But they haven't had, you know, any violations since then. So, I think an extension of the probation for a month.
I agree with you. I just, I just hate to see you let a good employee go. I mean.
May I approach?
Yes.
Roger Skaggs, I'm retired Treeport police. And used to know you real well.
Yeah.
And I used to be a sergeant over the vice unit. And so, we really try to comply with the vice laws. And when a mistake is made, we try to correct the mistake, and we do it immediately. We've had incidents where we went out and bought metal detectors, we bought the ID checkers. We do everything that vice asks us to do. And nobody's perfect, make mistakes, and employees make mistakes. Employees do things that are wrong. I don't really believe this is going to let her in. There's something else was going on there. And we would be glad to keep her, and we hope we can help her out. She's trying to join the Air Force right now, so, but if she needs a job, we'd welcome her back.
I would, I would hope that Jabba Charles, you think you can get in touch with her?
Yes, sir.
And, and have her to come back because we all need to work. And, you know, we all make mistakes.
And the thing Russ would have had to do with that is make sure she can get her ABO card back if she lost it because of it.
She, what does she need to do to get her ABO card back?
No action's been taken on her ABO card. As far as I know, she still has it. It was not revoked or denied.
Okay. Did you hear that? Okay. So, Jabba, see if you, see if you can contact the Hickus. You know, we need to have all the workers we can get here in Treeport.
May I ask a question, Mr. Fungy, is that how you?
Fungy.
Where do you, where do you live? Do you reside in Treeport?
I actually live in Bossier. I live, we live on a houseboat. We live on a river.
Okay.
That should be fun.
It is. We sold the house. Well, the economy doesn't help things. You can't have the toys in your house, so you had to give up one or the other. Well, I got kids and we like the water, and so we decided to sacrifice and downsize to eight hundred square feet of living space on a boat, which is great. We love it. It's great. But we do living Bossiers on the river. And, you know, we come down for the July Fourth weekend and stuff like that. And we, you know, we, you know, we like it what we do. But we're going to do everything that I say I want to do. We have never said we're not going to do something, not do it. But with that being said, again, once all this stuff's in place, within this week, we should have it all finished, hopefully. If not, maybe first and next week will be done. But with that being said, if you, anybody wants to feel free to come look at my cameras, look at my situation, I would feel free. Anybody who work, I am here. We own the building. I have to pay for it. I have to make it work, and I'm doing, I'm doing what I can to make it work. You know, I wish, I wish things were different, but it's not. So, at this point in time, I, I'm going to do what I say I want to do. And, and another thing real quick, like the downtown sergeant, so it's just been about a month ago, had requested about the lights in the parking lot were not working. And this is something we did years ago, oh, ten years ago, probably, I think, when Shelly was doing a lot of stuff. We always kind of kept together on lighting. He asked me about it. Within that week, those lights are back burning on, and, you know, so the parking lot's nice and lit up now. So, every time.
So every time somebody wants something done, if I can get it done, we will get it done. And all it was is burnt balls and he had a sweatcoat to come out and fix it.
We appreciate what you're doing, and we appreciate the entertainment that you all having for the city, it helps the, it helps the city to grow, and it helps to improve the quality of life in the city, so. Because now, the next Fourth of July, I might get Jabba to take me up and let me see your house, but other than that, I'm telling you about it.
You know, what we got, you know.
Better watch out, Joe.
We'll take, we'll take y'all for a little round in the river.
Any more questions?
If I could, do we have a, do I have 30 days? Yeah, I'm gonna add 30 days to the probation period.
Okay, been moved by Councilman Ellison and seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins, that yeah, extended probation period for 30 days, additional 30 days. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, no, this motion passes with a 7-0 vote. You know, I'm a part of this, this, uh. I'm a part of this new group, you know, we act fast.
Well, council, when, Mr., when I must finish with the cameras, I will let you know and call you, and if you wanna come out and look at it to see what the improvements are, feel free to come by, anybody.
Thank you.
I ask you.
Thank you.
Thank you, alright. Okay.
Go next to tab number two. This one is a little bit different, it's for Shreveport Hilton. When they turned in the renewal, they have a 60-40 affidavit, they have to turn in with it. And it basically states that they have to have at least 60% of their gross sales has to be comprised of food, the way the ordinance is written. When they turned in their affidavit, it's stated in the folder, they had 58.5%. What it also says is, if they don't meet the requirement, the chief of police shall deny the application, so we don't have any leadway on this. If they're under 60%, we deny, if they appeal, they bring it to you, at which time they did appeal.
Just push the apple pie, huh?
Well, and, and in further discussion about this, I think what was brought to my attention is, the way they were calculating, so it's 40, so the 60% food sales, right?
The gross sales have to comprise at least 60%.
Of food, and they were calculating it, putting in some sales from their gift shop, that it wasn't alcohol, but it also wasn't food, so it threw their average off a little bit. When you take that out, their balance is within the correct balance that it would need for it to be renewed. So it is sort of a quirk as in the fact that most restaurants don't also have retail sales to factor into that. And so I think that's what explains for the difference there. And so I would be.
What is your motion?
I'd be. But I thought he says he has no leadway to.
The police department has no leadway, we must deny the application, they appealed it, then it comes to you.
Yeah.
We can do something about it right here.
And I would like to grant the appeal and allow them to.
Are they, are they here, are they?
Yes, they're here.
Let them come up and say something to us.
Okay.
And Jeff, just, would you all explain to me, so you got 100% of your sales, some percentage of that is gifts, some percentage of that is food, and some percentage is alcohol, is that what I'm getting at?
Correct, when we, when we filled out the application, it has to be total sales of food and beverage sales, and we inadvertently put in there our other income sales, which other income included audiovisual rental, meeting room rental, and banquet service charge, which goes into our total sales, but it's not food or beverage sales. So if you take those three, those three revenues out, it actually brings our total food sales to 64.6% of just total food and beverage sales. So we inadvertently put those three in there, that's what the difference is.
I visit your establishment quite often, maybe I order extra, order the wings.
I think maybe you should come by for lunch more frequently.
Don't drink at lunch this time.
But I will add to your food sales.
Pretty good.
Okay, did we, did we get that?
I second you there, Councilman Ellison.
Are you gonna repeat that motion?
The motion is to grant the license because the calculations, when done correctly, show that they have more than 60% in food sales.
Okay, that motion by Councilman Ellison and seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. Legislation passes with a 7-0 vote. Gentlemen, thank you all. I believe so, Mr. Thompson, I mean Dale?
Yes, sir.
What else you got in mind?
There are no other MPC, I mean, the MPC appeals will be decided tomorrow.
Right.
There are no other appeals, reports from officers, boards, and committees.
I was gonna get your report tomorrow, Mr. Thompson, I know Councilman Oliver Jenkins is just itching to get a report from you. We'll let him scratch that itch tomorrow. Okay, executive session?
That's correct.
That's correct, huh?
That's correct, you need a motion, so move?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, that we would now.
Mr. Chairman, let's put it on the record, that was a request that in pursuant to LSARAS 4216 and RAS 4217A2 in the matter of Stevie L. Hendris versus Jonathan B. Eichner in the City of Shreveport, Docket Number 566547-P, First Judicial District, Quoicato, Paris, Louisiana, that the council would go into executive, executive session to discuss this particular case.
Uh, it has been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, that we would go into an executive session to discuss the previous matter that was given to us by our clerk, and all in favor, vote yes, and, Mr. Thompson? Okay, with a 7-0 vote, and I'm, I'm waiting for us to go into executive session for the lawsuit that was filed.
That's out of the agenda, isn't it?
I know, but I'm just, I'm waiting for it.
If you're, you're welcome to take my spot.
No. I'm waiting for it, I wanna sit in on it, Mr. Scott, I, I have some friends who have been named in that suit.
I pointed out they may have the wrong Jenkins, but they haven't gotten. Who's gonna be in the executive session?
Yeah, but check that and see if, see if they have the wrong Jenkins on there.